Alderman Mozio.
Present.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Turner. Alderman Turner.
He's out there talking, he's out there.
Alderman Turner? Alderman Turner?
Just yell, "Present."
I need an amen, okay. Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Hayes.
Here.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Mayor Taylor.
Present.
You have a quorum, ma'am.
Thank you. Our invocation will be by Pastor Jesus Guarina from, um, okay. And then afterwards, I'll let you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance too, okay?
Aye.
Thank you.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we want to thank you for the opportunity to gather here today. We ask your blessing upon this meeting, the City Council, our mayor, and all the people that call Waukegan home. Thank you for the many blessings of abundant life, health, and well-being. We thank you for the ability to get involved and the opportunity to hear our elected officials and to have our elected officials hear us. These things we pray in your name. Amen.
Thank you.
Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's comments. Um, I want to thank our sponsors for the fireworks this weekend. Um, the Waukegan Park District and ComEd contributed to that. Um, our fireworks were done in about a six-week time period that we decided to do them and put all this in, uh, gear. And I think it was a phenomenal show. And again, I want to thank our sponsors. I want to quickly read, um, something that a resident wrote because so often our staff doesn't get the recognition that they deserve. And I think that this is a great way for them to understand how much they're appreciated. It says, "I want to personally thank your team, the city of Waukegan, the mayor, the police department, hired security, and all involved for a wonderful 4th of July holiday. This year was the most organized, well-staffed, well-run summer holiday I have experienced at the Waukegan Lakefront. Besides being one of the best fireworks show, it was truly spectacular. Traffic flow management was extremely well-done. I really appreciated the added security at Clayton and Seahorse Drive, Harbor Place, and near the Waukegan Yacht Club. Our town enjoyed the 4th of July holiday thanks to a wonderful job by this, done by the city and staff." Again, I want to thank the staff for everything to put this kind of show together in a six-week period and have sponsors come and help us. I just want to thank you for this. This is what Waukegan does, we pull together. So, thank you. Waukegan band concerts start tonight at the Steiner Pavilion. They will be here, um, every day, or every Tuesday for the month of July. Please take time to go over there. They start, I believe, at 7:30 and, um, they will, like I said, be here for the month of July. Um, the CARES Act small business grants are now available. Please go to waukeganil.gov and go to the city's department under Block Grant to find out more information about that. COVID shots, please. If you haven't gotten a COVID shot, please consider it. We are getting some spikes in other parts of the country and it won't be too long before you'll see them here. So, please take this opportunity and continue to get vaccinated. We have on Wednesday, July 28th at 6 o'clock, the 5th Ward, Alderman Newsom will be doing a cleanup in her ward. Um, or, I'm sorry, this is a ward meeting, not a cleanup, I'm sorry. So, that'll be at 6:00 PM here at City Hall. Tomorrow, there's a ribbon-cutting at Friendship Park at 11 o'clock, immediately followed by ribbon-cutting at Hilltop Park by the Park District. BLM is doing a business expo on, um, August 28th. Brochures are available for that also. And, um, I believe that's it for mayor's announcements. Thank you. Oh, I forgot, one of the most important ones. I had it here. There will be a shred fest, um, on, um, July 24th. And, um, Alderman Kirkwood will be talking more about it in detail. But, um, it is right here, um, in the Lake County Sheriff's parking lot. And again, it's from 8:30 to 11:30 and it's on July 24th. And bring all your documents that you want to have shredded. And again, I'll let Alderman Kirkwood talk about it more in detail, um, under Alderman Time. But write down that date because it's an important date. It's one of the few times we have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Audience time, we have three minutes each. And the first one, if you want to take to the podium, is Caholy Stewart. Carolyn? Sorry. Ms. Stewart?
Good evening, everybody. Is it, is this working? Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Carol Stewart and I live at 1517 13th Street, Waukegan, Illinois. And, um, I came with a complaint of the noise level in my neighborhood, actually, my next-door neighbor. Now, I've lived there over 30 years, in the Lions, uh, district there, across from Twin City Park. And, uh, what's happening is they're turning, uh, their backyard into a bar and disco. And, uh, they have those big woofer speakers that just pulsates my house in ears. Now, I brought the, uh, a wife over there to hear it. And she heard it. And she said she would go back and tell the husband who was in the shower. Well, um, she did, uh, I mean, I don't know if she told the husband or not, but anyway, the music didn't stop and the party started around 5:00 in the evening. And so, it just pulsated and pulsating. I couldn't get in, uh, away from it in any of my rooms because the houses over there are so close together. And when they set up those speakers, they set them up right under my bedroom window. So, I mean, the pounding. So, anyway, I asked them to turn it down. I'm not saying turn it off, I'm not saying, uh, not to have your party. Have your party, but turn it off at a reasonable time. I ended up calling the police at 11:30. They couldn't come because it was a Saturday night and they said they were busy. But they would get there as soon as possible. So, they got there at 1:30 in the morning. And I, I appreciated that and then they shut the party down. But I think we should have meetings. And I guess Alderman Newsom has meetings. But we don't have any meetings in the 2nd Ward. And we need to start having meetings. I can help with them. And so, the, um, people in the 2nd Ward can voice their concerns. And so, that other people, newcomers, can be apprised of the laws that we have about nuisance laws. Okay? Or, um, turning the music down. Just turn it down, that's all. So, that's what, all I have. And I did talk to some people about it that, and I'm sure it's going to be handled.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. The next, um, that was right on time. Ms. Carrasco.
Good evening. I received a letter from corporate counsel in response to my FOIA request dated June 15th. So, let's begin to expose the deep, deep corrupt, culture of corruption that flourished under the previous liquor commissioner administration. Number one, Greentown on the Rocks. And I have the letter from legal counsel here. Their liquor license was dated June 2nd, 2021, only one day before Mayor Taylor took office. And no business license. However, it gets better yet. I have a video of a corrupt Waukegan cop who blatantly lied and protecting this business, refusing to take a police report. Meanwhile, they've been operating with no liquor license. Next, CYOC, Create Own Cheesecake on Green Bay Road. Uh, according to the findings, uh, findings is that no liquor license, no business license. Okay, number three, Cap Catering. Ouch. 20, 206 North Genesee Street. No liquor license, no business license. Number four, Me Pueblo Restaurant on Grand Avenue. You know that one restaurant that keeps burning heavy fires over and over again? Okay? Well, that didn't stop him. The liquor license was issued just recently, a month ago, on May 1st. But he had so many parties and so much liquor flowed and flowed. Drum roll, please. Now, the last one, the last one's the best one, okay? CYOC Bar and Lounge. And I asked 4th Ward Alderman Kirkwood, who's sitting right there, "Is this not your business, sir?" The findings was, he was granted a liquor license on May 1st, just recently, a month ago? That's what I say too. All these years and no liquor, you're an alderman disgraceful. So, tonight, I ask for your resignation, sir. That's shameful. And I also ask an investigation to Janet K. Kelly and what's her involvement and knowledge allowing all these businesses to operate with no liquor license? Are they paying sales tax, the city tax? Are they paying state, uh, taxes too?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Margaret. Clyde McLamore? Clyde?
I ain't started yet. Don't wait, 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 John. Good evening, board members. I am here, first to mention the pink, the big pink elephant that sits in the city council and around the country. The violence since the beginning of summer, there has been seven murders in the tri-cities, North Chicago, Waukegan, and Zion. Not counting all the children who were shot that didn't die. One child could not properly use a gun and shot himself. I am not here looking for answers or, uh, to stop it. I'm sure none of y'all could answer it anyway. Hell, the president couldn't even answer why. He looking for some answers. On Sunday, June 27th, the community came together at Eugene King Park. It was a day of true care for the community. The mayor, Alderman, uh, Alderman woman, uh, Newsom, and, uh, the fire chief and the police chief was the only ones there from this board. The alderwoman that is over the ward didn't even show up. And I understand, sometime, you, you know, you be busy and you can't make certain things. But you send a representative if you care about your community. You know, they, uh, uh, there are five, four, 1, 2, 3, 4. Four black aldermen here that sits on this board. And only one showed up. And I ask you, do you really care about this community? Because I bet you election time, y'all sure go be out there. You know what I'm saying? And, but Alderman Newsom don't even live in the district and she stayed the whole time. The mayor, the mayor don't live over there, but she was there for the whole thing. You know what I'm saying? And y'all really needed to hear what these youth were saying. You know, uh, they were speaking their pain. And maybe their pain would give us some resolution into how we could stop this violence that's going around here. You know? Sure, I'm not, I'm not faulting none of, none of y'all. But I am looking at those that look like this, that wasn't there because we the ones that y'all turn around and say, as the media call it, black-on-black crime. But I call it community crime because it's people that sits on these boards that don't come in our community that try to help the people that look like them. Thank y'all for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. McLamore. Brian Edwards?
Good evening. I come up here just a few minutes to say a few things. First of all, I want to say thank you to the mayor for showing up Sunday at the ceasefire event. Um, I also want to thank Ms. Newsom for showing up. Um, I came here last time and I spoke to a lot of y'all and I, I really don't think, um, a lot of people is hearing me with what I'm saying. To effectively do your job, you have to engage with the people. You can't engage with them if you're sitting behind your desk. You can't engage with them if the only time they get to talk to you is by phone conversation. When we elected a lot of you guys to take office, we elected you on good faith that you was going to do a certain thing and certain things. And you're failing us. You're failing us. There's no excuse at all why you elected officials cannot show up at these events that we're trying to bring together to engage the community. In case a lot of you guys don't know, I'm going to tell you, one of the things about engaging in a community or getting anything done, a dialogue have to start. In order for a dialogue to start, we all have to be there. Okay? I sometimes often ask myself, "How many of you have kids live in this community?" Often wonder. You know, it's sad. Lot of y'all have lived in this city as long as I have. And, and, and right now, we at a different time. I don't hold nobody on this board accountable for the things that happen in the community. But I am going to say this, we elected you to do a job. If the job is too much or too big, step down and let somebody else do that job. Because we need people here that's going to do the work, not people here to just take the job and just have a title. Because when election time is going up, I see all of y'all. You hear me? I see all of y'all. And so, here it is, I'm stepping out here. I got people at the table ready to talk ideas some Sunday that I didn't think would be possible to do. But I didn't see a lot of y'all and that's the first question they ask me. You tell us to talk to them, but they can't even come out here to talk to us. So, let's stop having these meetings at the places that you comfortable at. And go to the places that you work for in your ward, in your neighborhood. Let them see you. Because I've been through every ward in this city and a lot of them don't even know who their alderman is. And it ain't their fault. It's your fault. Because you are paid elected official. And if it ain't enough money, you shouldn't have never took the job. Now, I'm serious, y'all. I need y'all to get up and get engaged. I need some fire up on y'all. Because we trying to save lives here. I don't want no more babies dying. To you, mayor, and to everybody that put on this 4th of July event, the fireworks, you guys did an awesome job. Whether anybody give y'all credit or not, I'm going to give you some credit when it's due. But I ain't going to pat you on the back for doing the job that you get paid to do. And I know that ain't part of it, but you did a fabulous job. Traffic was well and we didn't have no violence.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pitts. Charlie Pitts.
Um, I guess, um, yeah, I, I can't throw rocks forever. I'll throw rocks maybe tonight or maybe some other time. But, um,
Can you speak up a little bit?
Um, all right. Well, I said I won't throw rocks as much tonight, but maybe later. Um, for me, some of the solutions, you talk about crime and all of these things. I think your solutions are like, pass legislation that says employers have to pay a living wage, maybe starting at 15 and adjust it to inflation. One of the reasons I didn't get in trouble because I was working. You know, if I got to go work 8, 10 hours a day, I didn't have time for crime. Sam Cunningham, he had, he was, he promoted something about summer jobs for the youth. I'm wondering if you can promote it or implement any of that. I guess some of my other concerns are, Joe Biden is talking about all of this money, billions of dollars coming down the pipeline for education and, uh, redevelopment of roads and infrastructure. So, I'm wondering, is there a committee to figure out how you're going to get some of those monies? Or what's the plan on bringing that money into the community? The other situation that I'm, I'm concerned about is the, the fireworks and different things like that because some people are losing their appendages. Someone just lost their face in, like, Waukegan. I would hope that, um, the, the mayor, the aldermen, the police, the other organizations could be a little bit more aggressive in, like, getting the word out that people need to be safe with these things. Sometimes people are playing games with these things that could be deadly. I guess, I've, I've been, I went to the beach a couple of days ago and it, it looked, it looked better than what I had seen last time. So, I do want to commend the city of Waukegan for that. I guess the other, for me, the other solution for problems regarding crime is to build a community and build a, build a culture that says we're supposed to be loving and nurturing towards each other. We have, um, we have a media that tells us not to care about each other. That's, those are some of the core things. Do you kill someone you're related to, or you care about, or you need? For the most part, I think it's no. And you got your, you got your Waukegan band thing.
Thank you, Mr. Pitts. Thank you. Mayor, that concludes audience time.
Thank you, clerk. Consent agenda. Can I have a motion to, um, re, read the, or approve the consent agenda as it states? Can I have a first? Well, first I should ask, is there anything that needs to be pulled out? Um, a motion by Alderman Mozio, a second by Alderman Newsom. I will read the consent agenda. Item A, motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from Monday, June 21st, 2021. B, motion to approve the special city council meeting committee of the whole appropriation ordinance budget hearing meeting minutes from Thursday, July 1st, 2021. Motion to approve, I'm sorry, item C, motion to approve miscellaneous payroll, police department uniform allowance, elected official, Hayes final payouts, Verbrick and Garcia, dated June 18th, 2021 in a total of $168,751.14. Item D, motion to approve miscellaneous payout, police holiday buyback and comp time cash out dated July 2nd, 2021 in a total amount of $21,703.6. Item E, motion to approve regular payroll dated July 2nd, 2021 for a total amount of $1,665,348.2. Item F, motion to approve vendor payments dated July 5th, 2021 in a total amount of $1,449,178.19. Item G, motion to approve the 2021 Annual Action Plan Amendment in the amount of $797,247, which is an additional amount of $11,578 as presented. Item H, motion to waive the bid procedure and authorize the proper authorities to execute required documents to purchase a used 2018 wheeled excavator for $167,190 from Burris Equipment and grant purchasing authority for an additional $25,000 for parks, materials, and rentals. The equipment purchased will be charged to the 2018 B bonds. Item I, motion to authorize the proper city officials to enter into a contract and approve the pricing to the low-qualified bidder, EG USA Inc., that is listed and highlighted on the attached bid tab for the 2021 manhole and catch basin frames and grates bid. Item J, motion to authorize the proper city officials to enter into a contract and approve the pricing to the low-qualified bidder, EG USA Inc., that is listed and highlighted on the attached bid for the 2021 hydrant bid. Item K, motion to authorize the proper city officials to enter into a contract and approve the pricing to the low-qualified bidders, Peter Baker &amp; Sons of Lake Bluff and Ozinga of Monika, Illinois, that is listed and highlighted on the attached bid tab for the 2021 annual commodities bid. Item L, motion to authorize the proper city officials to enter into a contract with and approve the pricing of the low-qualified bidders, Shannon Chemical, Alexander Chemical, SNF Polidide, and Usicol for the chemicals listed and highlighted on the attached bid tab for the 2021 water plant chemicals bid. Item M, motion to authorize the proper city officials to enter into a contract with Carbon Activated Corp. and approve the pricing as listed and highlighted on the attached bid tab for the 2021 ethodeis filter media bid. Item N, motion to authorize the proper city officials to enter into a contract with Badger Meter, the lower bidder, and approve the pricing listed and highlighted on the attached bid tab for the 2122 and 2223 water meter bid. Item O, motion to approve an audience, uh, ordinance to amend the intergovernment agreement between the city of Waukegan and Swalco regarding an alternative director. Item P, motion to authorize participation in the Lake County Joint Purchasing Agreement relative to the purchase of sand, CA6 gravel, pulverized topsoil, and washed number 6 stone from Menone &amp; Megone Incorporated. Please see the attached price list for approval and highlighted prices for materials. Item Q, motion to authorize the proper city officials to enter into a contract with Air Comfort Corporation and approve the attached highlighted pricing for HVAC prevention maintenance as the low-qualified bidder on a bid that Lake County, Illinois solicited and in which the city of Waukegan participated. The contract terms begin 1/1/21 and ends 12/31/22 and includes an option for three-year renewal periods. Item R, motion to approve a resolution consenting to execution of a solar lease agreements by Yeoman Creek Remediation Group. Item S, motion to approve all raffle permits. Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman, Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you. There being no reports and communications, old business. Item A, motion to approve a resolution approving a consultation agreement with RJ Harrison Associates in the amount of $87,000. Can, um, I have a fir, okay. Alderman Turner?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to amend that agreement that's before, specifically, I want to move to strike the second sentence from the second page of the agreement because I think that that line, uh, that the line immediately preceding it adequately directs Mr. Harris to work with community groups and grassroots organizations throughout the city. And there's no need to single out a specific group or any specific groups, uh, Mr. Harris will interface with and, uh, to the exclusion of any others.
Okay. So, um, can I have a motion to amend?
I make that motion?
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Alderman Rivera? Okay, roll call, please.
So, yeah, just, so, just to be clear, there was not a main motion on the, um, on the table to approve as written. So, we can take this as the main motion. It's, it's basically, if, if the council agrees, you can take this as a main motion. Or we can take a motion to, to first, um, approve the contract as written and then entertain the motion to, um, to amend.
What is the problem with the sentence, Alderman Turner? I'm a little confused. I'm sorry? What's the problem with the sentence? I'm a little confused. So, as, as it's written, Alderman Mozio, it, the contract specifies specific groups that Mr. Harris can engage with. And what I want to do is remove that specificity and, and make it broad so that he can engage with any community-based organization at the mayor's direction. direction. And it's already spoken in the contract, we're just adding an extra that needs to be taken out. So I'm just asking to remove that line item.
Well, Mayor Taylor, do you think you'd have a problem with that?
No.
Okay.
So do we want to make it as a main motion? Is that what you're asking?
Otherwise, you got to go through the amendment and then the motion. If councillor says we can go through one motion, that's fine.
With the leave of the body, you can approve the contract with the amendment as proposed by Alderman Turner.
That's what I would like to make, that motion.
So we're going to approve as amended, correct councillor?
That would be correct. So we have a motion, was there a second on that?
Alderman Rivera seconded it.
Yes.
I'm sorry, yeah.
As long as Mayor Taylor says he won't have a problem with it, I'm fine with it.
Roll call, please. Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Under new business, item A, motion to approve appropriation ordinance and revenue certification for the fiscal year May 1st, 2021 to April 30th, 2022. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion now.
Alderman Turner, second. Second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry, there's discussion?
Everybody understands that this is a motion to spend money.
Yes.
This is a motion to spend money of which 111 million come from taxes. We understand that? Good enough.
Okay, was there any discussion or, okay.
I just like to say one thing, it's, I don't really have a question, but I'm excited that the budget is balanced. This is the first time I've gotten to vote on a balanced budget as an alderman. I do realize part of the reason it's balanced is because of the $9 million we got from the federal government, which isn't going to happen. It's going to happen again next year, but it's not going to happen every year. And so I just want us to be cognizant of that fact. I want us to realize, we've never had a plan other than a one-year budget every year, and I'm excited that now the mayor has directed the finance department to come up with a five-year plan. I think that's something we've needed for a long time, and I'm glad to hear that that's going to happen. This is not a perfect budget in my mind, but it's, it's balanced and I'm very excited about that, so I just wanted to say that.
When we say balanced, it's balanced with the American Rescue money that we received. We actually started off with an 8.5, well, we had $12 million in requests, got it down to 8.5, I think it was then 3.4, and that's what the rescue money has. We haven't used all $9 million to fix our budget problems. But realistically, I'm very concerned in the future, if we didn't have that rescue money, we would still have a deficit. So we still need to make changes throughout the city, and we will be addressing that going forward. But we have to have a budget by July 31st, and I, I can't tell you how thankful I am to Don Schultz, Sherry from Finance, and Chief Bridges, who has done an outstanding job, Noel Keisha Lupper, and Tamika Jones from our HR department. I'm telling you, this group has pulled together like you wouldn't believe, and I could not be more proud of this staff and, and the aldermen who have come to the table and just worked really hard. And, you know, I just want to say thank you to everybody for that. So roll call, please. Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye, to spend money.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Outstanding.
Thank you, Alderman.
Congratulations.
Item B, motion to approve an ordinance to amend Section 11-36.1, solid waste nuisance of the city code to include the NRG coal plant in the lakefront development zone. Any questions to the motion? Okay, roll call, please.
Do we get a motion on that?
No.
We need a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, we need a motion on that. Alderman Rivera, second.
I'll second it.
Alderman, who said second?
Rivera.
Alderman Seager? Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion passed. Item C, motion to adopt Resolution 21R as presented, providing an early retirement incentive program for eligible Illinois municipal retirement fund IMRF employees in accordance with Section 7-141.1 of the Illinois Pension Code. The matter was heard in the Government Operations and Oversight Committee meeting on July 6th, 2021. Any questions to the motion?
So moved.
Okay, so Alderman Mozio and Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please. Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. Item D, motion to adopt ordinance 21-0-, and we'll fill that in later, is an ordinance amending Section 2 of the city code to establish the appointed office of chief of staff.
I'll second it.
Okay, first by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Turner. Any questions to the motion? Yes.
Could, I read the description of the chief of staff position. Can you just elaborate a little bit on the difference between this position and what you call the city manager and where we're at in that process?
Well, right now, we're not going to go into the city manager because that's not on the budget for approval, but what the chief of staff role will be right now is planning, organizing, managing, directing, and overseeing the day-to-day operations currently. They'll be providing expert professional assistance, they'll, you know, be part of the mayor's staff, and they'll support city officials and department heads. But at a later date, if, when we talk about city manager, we'll separate what those duties will be. Okay? Any, we had a motion, right?
Yes.
Okay. Newsom and Turner.
Just, just real quick, Mayor, just so everyone knows, and Alderman Newsom can maybe reiterate this, every mayor that me and her have worked with has had, whatever you want to call them, chief of staff, director of governmental services, right-hand person, you know, go fix it for me. So everybody has had that. We've changed the titles a few times, but the mayor, no matter who sits in that chair, needs help. That's not a one-person job by any stretch of the imagination. Every mayor that we have worked with needs help. They can't, they can't do it. It's just too arduous to get your arms around everything. So I just want the public to know that, you know, we keep, director of governmental service, whatever we want to call it. Chief of Staff has probably been maybe the best, and I don't like, I hate titles, I can't stand them, but needs help. So I want the public to understand, it's not like we're creating a new management position, we're paying somebody ex-, no. Every mayor's had it, and they need it. So I just want people to understand that.
Okay, roll call, please. Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. Now I'd like to make a motion to appoint chief of staff, and that chief of staff will be George Bridges Jr.
I'd like to make, I'll make that motion.
And I ask for you to come up, and I'd like your father to swear you in.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
A motion?
He's got the second.
Okay, Alderman Rivera and Alderman Turner. Before we do that, we need to make a roll call.
Wait a minute, hold on, hold on. We're going to do a roll call.
Hold on, I'm going to let you guys prepare, but I do need to make a roll call, please. Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you.
Thanks.
I, before you speak, I just want to say, from the bottom of my heart, I am so happy and so appreciative that you have agreed to do this. I'm not going to say a lot because I'll probably cry, but this is a man that has worked so hard for this city in so many different ways. He's one of the most trusted people I know. He's been a part of our city forever, and I just couldn't be more thrilled for him to move in the office next to me. So, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Come on, Judge, this ain't your first time.
You sworn in, you still fire chief. I have a few words. I want to, I do want to take this opportunity to thank the city council, the city of Waukegan, for everything you've done for our family, for me, in the early 70s, allowing me to start as a police officer here for this city, to the point where now I'm the presiding justice of the second district appellate court. That's all because of what I learned here in this city. You know, the crucible of the fire made me who I am, and I used those same tools on my firstborn. And I'm so proud of him. I am so proud of him. You know, he's, he only let me down once, and I got to tell you this story before I say it. Already voted, so, it's already a done deal. But anyway, he became a fireman, I was so proud. It's a cookout at my house. So I get the grill started, I decided to call my new fireman up. I called him up at home and I said, "Son." I started the grill and it got the shed on fire. I said, "Come on over." And you know what he said, this top fireman, he said, "You better dial 911." Would even come to help. But anyway, enough said. You know, I thank you for this honor. I've been here swearing in elected officials, and now I get to swear in my son, and there's no more enjoyable duty than to do that. And so I thank you, Mayor. She lit my phone up four times, calling me to tell me about this. So are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, face, you face the camera so the public can see. Raise your right hand.
Would you like to bring your family up, too? Or, yeah, come on.
My daughter, can I get my daughter to come on up with me?
Come on, Chief.
Where's the bike? Sharon, please come up. Okay, well, it still works. Repeat after me. I.
I.
George Bridges Jr. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of.
And the Constitution of.
The state of Illinois.
State of Illinois.
That I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
Chief of Staff.
Chief of Staff.
For the city of Waukegan.
For the city of Waukegan.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. All the glory goes to my Lord, my Savior, Jesus Christ. I just, everything is possible through Him. I love my family. My family has just been everything to me, my wife, my moms, my dad, Sharon, need to get her some pom-poms because she is constantly cheerleading, my wife and the kids, and I just want to make sure that I thank Mayor, Council, all the staff that I work with, this community. All the love, support, the nurturing came from all of you. Every day I come to work, I cannot let you down. That's the reason why it's so easy for me to come in and do what I do. The fire department, all of the brothers and sisters that I work with, amazing. There is no one better than them. I have a passion because I love this city, absolutely love this city. I've listened to Mayor Taylor and her vision. I've listened to you, Alderman, I think that you're probably tired of me, but I've heard what it is that you want, and I can tell you, I love this city, I have a passion. It's time for Waukegan to start winning. Come on. We need to start winning. We owe everyone in this community, and if anything, if I have anything to do with it, we are going to pay you. We owe you, we owe your children, we owe every one of you more than we give because there's more to give. We have a lot of people working very, very hard. We can do more for you. So I want to say thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. I am going to work my butt off, I'm going to work my butt off. Please allow me, Mayor, to take, come in and do what you've asked me on Monday. There's some more things that I want to do. We have so much that we, you've allowed us to bring in some more people on Friday, so I ask of you, please allow me to continue in until Friday to bring on some more of the best anywhere firefighters, I'm even getting another female in our department, so please. Again, thank you, and I will do everything, everything, to allow Waukegan to win. Chief of Staff! Chief of Staff!
Not so hasty. Can we get a group photograph?
Sure.
You want to stand up back there? You want to get close? George? Chief? Yeah? Please do, George.
Step in front of the chairs.
You like to go.
Step in front of the chairs.
You like to go.
Step in front of the chairs.
Still, you want me in the photograph?
I'm just giving you the option.
Okay, everyone, look at Jane, please.
Look right here. If you look at stretched, then you'll put it in the right place, and then I'll get out of the way and everybody else will take pictures. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Ceremony is private.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I know, I know.
Well, I don't want to exclude the alderman, it is alderman time, and I know it's kind of like, you know, after that, but it is alderman time, so we'll start with Alderman Seager tonight.
Good evening, everybody.
Alderman Seager.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you all for being here. Congratulations, Mr. Bridges, new chief of staff.
Chief.
God bless. I'd like to start out, the second ward, July 10th, a reminder to the residents that we'll be dropping off in a dumpster, it will be located on 12th and Greenfield Avenue between 8:00 and 10:30 in the morning. This is the first Operation Clean Sweep, and I'll be out on the ward this week passing out the rest of the flyers. It started out just being the Fourth Ward, but with the help of the state rep and state senator, we can expand that to the entire city of Waukegan. Also, in the Fourth Ward, we will be conducting a ward meeting. I'll get that information out to you towards the end of the month. It'll be in the month of August. We're waiting on a area to do it, whether we're gonna do it here at City Hall, whether we do it Zoom, or at Yeoman Park. But we'll get some information out to you. Once again, congratulations to the new Chief of Staff. Also, I think the Police Department did an outstanding job at the fireworks. I was down there, it was very orderly. We need to continue to promote the fireworks, so we can take it out of the neighborhoods. Still, there was a lot of fireworks going on in the neighborhoods, and we need to bring it back on the lakefront. Certainly, we heard about the different injuries, and that's why we need to put in a place where we take it out of the hands of individuals. And I know, we heard someone saying about, you know, the accidents, but people need to understand that we need to leave fireworks to professionals, and not to, in the, in the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Newsom.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I've been approached by a few people regarding these neighborhood repair shops. They have really gotten out of hand, cars everywhere, some of them that have been in accidents, some not even on tires, and things of that nature. I've spoken with the mayor, and hopefully Corporation Council is working on an ordinance that we can really, really enforce. I know a lot of times, they said that Waukegan is not business friendly, but when we have shops like this that make our business districts look like garbage, I think they should be city-friendly and abide by the ordinance. If we have some that are abiding by the ordinance, I think everybody should. And if we issue citations or warnings, we give them an opportunity to get it clean, and don't issue a citation, then in two or three weeks, they go back to the same thing, and we don't issue a citation. I think when you come and get a business license, you know exactly what the ordinance states on how you are supposed to operate. If you don't operate within those parameters, I don't think you should get a warning. I think you should get a citation the first time, because you know what the parameters are that you're supposed to be operating your business in. When we give you an opportunity to, two weeks to get it right, and then you fall in three weeks, and you don't get issued a citation, it's just like a revolving door. You just keep doing the same thing over and over, because you're not gonna get a citation. I know I'm preaching to the choir, because the people that are operating alike that are not here. But we gotta get a handle on this ordinance, so that we can clean up our neighborhoods with these repair shops. And what the mayor had stated earlier regarding my ward meeting, I will be hosting a ward meeting here at City Hall on Wednesday, July 28th, at 6 o'clock PM. Refreshments will be served, starting at 5:30. If you have any questions regarding anything, feel free to give me a call, or you can reach me by phone, 847-494-4190, or email edith.nusom@waukeganil.gov, and I'll be getting some flyers out in the ward. Also, congratulations to Chief, from Chief of Fire to Chief of Staff. So I'll still be calling you Chief, congratulations, again. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Alderman Turner.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Yeah, so, in the Sixth Ward, first of all, thank you, Mayor Taylor, for your great work. You didn't toot your own horn, you did an exceptional job on crafting that budget in 66 calendar days with no prior preparation. So I wanna kudos to you. I wanna congratulate Chief, Fire Chief George Bridges Jr., on his appointment to Chief of Staff. I'm very excited about that, and look forward to working with you, sir. In the Sixth Ward, we got a dumpster drop coming on next Saturday, July 13th. That'll be at 741 West Glen Flora, between 8:30 and 3:00 PM. That's on a Tuesday. And then the next dumpster drop, we're gonna try and do in August, that, that date is to be scheduled, so I'll announce that at a future meeting. I'm gonna have my ward, Sixth Ward meeting, on Saturday, July 17th, from 10 to 12 PM. That's in Upton Park. It's in the 700 block of Sheridan Road, or you can run up the end of Genesee Street, 700 block, have some light refreshments. And I'm asking for as many folks in the Sixth Ward who can attend, to please attend that meeting. I'm gonna be soliciting your input on several items related to public, public works and public safety specifically. I'm gonna talk about initiating a pilot project to implement some number of speed bumps or speed humps, and I'm gonna solicit your input on where those might go. Additionally, Mr. Hewitt and I have been talking about this project, and we also wanna implement one or more radar signs. I don't know where they're gonna go, and that's why I'm asking for citizen input. The next up, after the ward meeting on, I think we got 7:23, we're gonna be doing a cleanup along Elmwood, between Buck Avenue and Longview, and then around the corner on Longview, over to Lorraine. That's over, if you can picture, it's, it's the street that runs behind the bowling alley on Lewis, and, and up to, like, where Hillary's is, and then east into the landfills. A lot of trash and dumping, illegal dumping goes on over that area, we're gonna do a cleanup on the 17th, or the 23rd. The next public works meeting, and this is for the general public, not specific to the Sixth Ward, but the next public works meeting on July 19th. Again, we'll be talking about speed bumps, alternate parking, and the ShotSpotter, we're gonna have a ShotSpotter technology, or ShotSpotter systems. It's gonna make a presentation. I would encourage everyone who has an interest in public safety here in Waukegan, please attend, it's gonna be a very interesting meeting. And finally, last but not least, if anyone would like to contact me regards any of the items that I've mentioned, or any other reason at all, especially if you'd like to get on my email list, my contact information is 847-445-3788, it's my cell phone. I answer as immediately, if not immediately, I'll get back to you as quickly as I can. If you live in the Sixth Ward, more than likely, I'm gonna come see you at your door. And my email address is keith, K-E-I-T-H, at Keith E. Turner dot com. Keith@KeithETurner.com. Please send me an email, get you on my email list. Thank you for your attention, and good night.
Thank you. Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First, I'd like to congratulate the Chief on a tremendous achievement. Thank you very much. Also, I would like to congratulate the Chief's family, because as, as we all know, as public servants, nothing happens without our family's support. So thank you. Secondly, I would like to say that the 4th of July fireworks was tremendous. It really was. I've seen all of them, and this has to be the best one. I wanna thank Jane Ferry, David Motley, and the mayor and her staff, because obviously, without the staff, nothing happens around here. The Seventh Ward had a dumpster on June 29th. It was very successful. We're looking forward to an August date, because July has been taking up a lot from the other wards, so more to come on that. Thank you to the participants during the audience time, I really appreciate your comments. And, oh, one other thing. Make sure everyone attends the Lake County Black Business Expo, that's happening August 28th, and that's gonna be at 216 West Madison Street. And it'll be from 1:00 to 5:00. Any, anybody needs information, please contact Clyde at 847-344-2540. And that's all I had, thank you, and God bless.
Thank you. Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I wanna say, the dumpster I had on June 26th was a huge success. We were able to fill three dumpsters that day, so we're having another one on July 15th. That one will be all day, and it's at the Journey Church on York House Road, just west of Macquarie. It's a real nice in and out there, and it's from 8:00 to 3:00 on that Thursday. I wanna let Mr. Hewitt know that I got lots of compliments on your staff that day. Everyone talked about how helpful they were, and friendly, and so I really appreciate that. And we look forward to another successful dumpster cleanup on the 15th. I wanna also compliment everyone that was involved in planning the fireworks. Everyone I've talked to had a great time, I'm so glad everything went off safely, and, and there were no incidents, and I really am grateful that we were able to, to have this event, and have it safely, and, and celebrate as a community. And I do hope that maybe as time goes on, less will happen in the community with fireworks around the neighborhoods. I understand, you know, how interruptive it can be, how disruptive it can be to neighbors, and with small children, dogs, whatever, so we need to somehow figure out a way to get a handle on that. They are illegal in the state of Illinois, but people go to other states and buy them, so unless we start putting patrols at the border, I mean, we really can't prevent people from bringing them in. This is one of those areas where it's personal responsibility in some ways, right? Like, I wanted to point out to Alderman Mozio, I know he wasn't there last Thursday when we had our little budget presentation, but Alderman Turner was able to get on record that the budget that we were presented with requires no increase in the tax levy.
Right now. I mean, we've gotta see what next year's budget, 'cause you voted on last year's budget.
Right.
So I wanna make sure we understand that you're voting ahead. But it is, you know I've been a no-tax person, so we are going to scale that--
No tax, Taylor?
Yeah.[1394.91][1394.91](laughing)
And then I also want to join in congratulating the new Chief of Staff. I know you'll do a great job, and I, I look forward to working with you. Congratulations. And also, since our last meeting, I believe, Alderman Hayes became a father again, and I'd like to congratulate him on his new baby boy, so--[1417.54][1417.54](applause) That is all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Hayes.
Thank you for that, that's very kind. It's my wife who you should be applauding, not me. I didn't do anything. So, yes, we welcomed Finnegan Daniel Hayes on the 25th of June. Just shy of 10 pounds, so, yeah, he was a, he was a big boy.
And four weeks early, right?
Three weeks early.
Three weeks, still.
Yes, yep, so, we, my wife was warned how big he could've gotten, had he gone full term, but what I'd like to say is, thank you to the mayor and the staff for an incredibly well-organized and spectacular fireworks display, it was really impressive. Chief Bridges, I just wanna thank you for your service as, as a fireman, and on behalf of the Fire Department. I, I have heard, I've only been up here for a short period of time, but I've heard, but nothing but good things. I can say that, based on our meetings together over the past several weeks, I have just been continuously impressed by your knowledge of the inner workings of the city, and really your understanding of the community, and the community's needs, and your passion for Waukegan. So I'm really, really excited to work with you. I know you're gonna be a great resource to the, to the council, but to, to the mayor and the community. So thank you, and congratulations. For the Ninth Ward, we are having Operation Clean Sweep on Saturday, July 17th. There's going to be a dumpster at 2650 Belverdeer Road, which is in the southeast part of the parking lot there, there's a Dollar Tree and an IHOP, and a few, I think there's, there's a Taco Bell, there's a handful of different businesses in that parking lot, but it'll be in the southeast corner of the parking lot. I believe it's from 8:00 to 10:30, but I'm gonna confirm the time, but that will be July 17th. Going forward, if anybody needs anything, my number is 847-212-4762. I have the mayor's old cell phone number, so if you had the mayor's number when she was the Alderman, you now have my number. So reach out to me, whether you're in my ward or not, call me with anything, especially events that are going on in the community, I'd love to attend, and my email is Thomas.Hayes@WaukeganIL.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Bolton.
Yes, congratulations to Chief Bridges on your achievement. God bless you in this endeavor. And also, I wanted to thank YCC for our community cleanup in our alleys within the First Ward. They cleaned from 10th Street all the way down to May Street, they were on Martin Luther King, they were everywhere, and they did an awesome job as young people. And I understand they're gonna be doing it again this Friday, and I believe in the area of Helmholes, and Martin Luther King, and any other places that you all call me, they will repeat those alleys again, and do it again. Also, their community on Bluff Avenue by Washington Park is putting together a cleanup that will be the 26th, between 10 and 12. And they themselves have put that together, and I invite you, and I engage everyone, put together your team, and I will definitely try to do my best to be there for you. And I also wanna inform you all, I did show up at the event. I had two other events on that day, and I arrived late. However, I wanna make it very clear that I was there, and please give me advance notice, 'cause often, I'm having two or three events on the same day. So it's hard to be every place for everyone, all the time, in every place. So please, give me advance notice, so I can properly plan and budget my time. Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes the Alderman's time. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. One last reminder, 4th of July is over, let's stop the fireworks. Please understand that we have dogs that cannot tolerate it, we have people with PTSD, we have many people with hearing loss that cannot deal with this, so please, 4th of July is over, the celebrations are done, time to put the fireworks away. Thank you, everyone, have a good evening. Oh, we need a motion.
A motion?
Motion to adjourn. By, and who made the motion?
Rivera.
Second, by Alderman Seager. All in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.